Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome all participants to the virtual planning board meeting of July 11th. And at this point, I'd like to call the meetings order through a short form. Ms. Creighton?
Here.
Ms. Delicio? Ms. Foley?
Here.
Mr. Gilbert? Mr. Olley?
Here.
Ms. Tenny?
Here.
Thanks. We have a quorum. Like to remind all board members and guests to ask to be recognized by the chair if you wish to speak. And this meeting is being recorded. So first item on the agenda, we have received several correspondents. Ray Iavoni on June 28th and 29th. Fall special town meeting formatting the data was the topic. E Randolph on 7-1, the Kinder proposal on Spyrock Hill. A DEP application, 91 Waterways application on a tide gate removal. Mrs. S Hill on 7-5, top town priorities. Joan Kulu Kundus via Debbie Powers on our town of Manchester letter. And Stephen Colbert update on Zero C Street. Thank you all for corresponding. At this time, I would allow public comments on items not on the agenda with a limited time. Would anybody like to speak?
Excuse me, Ron. Do we have somebody taking minutes? Is Gail on? I can't tell.
I think Gail is the true.
I am.
Okay. Thank you.
Not hearing any comments.
Chair, this is Steve Colbert. May I make a comment?
Yes, go ahead. Could you state your name and address?
Yeah, Stephen Colbert, 9 C Street, Manchester by the Sea, Massachusetts. I am, I have written a few letters, including letters to both the town manager and Paul Orlando, the building inspector, regarding the site work that's taken place at Zero Spyrock Hill or One Spyrock Hill or Zero C Street. I don't know the address. I'm very concerned that maybe the town has too many too many levers that a homeowner or landowner may, may be able to pull to begin the process of building a home. And across the street from me was a very nicely treed lot that is now stripped of not only the trees, but also the undergrowth. And it's, it's quite stark. And while I don't begrudge anybody the opportunity to build on their property, it, it does, it should go through a process. And I feel like there's been some process steps skipped. Or maybe they haven't been, but I can't seem to get answers. In particular, this homeowner has done a lot of work in what I guess I, I refer to as the setback area. And I, I know the board is well aware of what's going on at this, on this lot. And I was just looking for an update from the board. Thank you.
Yeah. So the applicant has withdrew his application and last meeting, and there's nothing before us from the applicant for us to weigh in on. The last we heard was an ANR from the applicant, and that's been withdrawn. That's all I can say from the board's standpoint.
The last I heard, Ron, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, was that the the board did agree as one voice to speak to the building inspector after your June 27th, at the end of your June 27th meeting.
That's, that's correct. Sarah Creighton contacted Paul Orlando, and we got a response from Paul. He, I think he made him aware of zoning by law 616 on topo changes and that it would require a special permit. Sarah, anything else from your contact with Paul on that?
Um, nothing else on my contact with Paul. I think that the question about work and the setback is a jurisdiction of the DPW and the Port of Selectman. That's the first point. The second thing I'm gonna say is self-serving to it, what I think is one of our high priorities for the board is that the, we have two things that we are proposing to set to town meeting. One is to make stormwater requirements part of the general bylaws, which make them have broader applicability. And the other is site plan review, which if he, if that applicant, if that homeowner were to start just destroying the ledge, site plan review would be required before he could do that. Whether he would seek that first is, I can't foresee. But that site plan review that we have proposed for zoning would be more, would help us if, if that, if we were to review that plan. So I hope that in the future, you will help us to move those things forward. Thank you.
Thank you. No further questions.
Okay. Any other comments from the public? Okay, on the next item on the agenda, just as a note, the deliberation portion of the public hearings from 517 on draft zoning bylaw changes was continued to September at our next meeting in September. The next item is master plan, next steps discussion. This is for discussion. The board, the select board has asked us, asked for us to meet with them next Monday on recommendations and action steps from the master plan. Which ones does the planning board feel are top priorities that the town should be focused on? And how the select board to help ensure they're completed? Are there any new priorities that should be added? So I did invite to our meeting tonight co-chairs Sue Beckman and Gary Russell of the 2020 master plan. If the board has any questions on what's, what master plan is and what the priorities were at that time. But, and so I see Gary, you're with us tonight. Welcome back. And I don't see Sue. So at this point, I'll open up the discussion to the board. And I see Christina, you have, you're here, welcome. And you have your hand up.
I just wanted to make sure you knew I was here. Thanks. I had a little trouble signing in.
Understood. Well, can you?
Thank you.
Gail, make sure. And Ms. Foley?
Thanks, Ron. I do want to voice my concern that we might be in an open meeting violation with the revised agenda for this, since that topic was anticipated 48 hours prior to posting on the open meeting law website. I think we're going to be in violation if we continue.
Okay, so that was my concern. I talked to Greg and Greg said that it was okay to do that since it's a discussion and we're not voting. So.
I, I don't agree with that. I mean, I, I may be tempted to file a violation because I think this happens a lot, but that, I will leave that up to the chair.
Sarah?
Um, two things. One is I feel like I'd like to have us have more time before we meet with the Board of Selectmen to align our priorities with that discussion. So that's just, I guess, a request as we think about next meetings, which are on the agenda, I think, that we perhaps postpone that. But the second thing is also on the agenda, which is zoning. I think when we look at our zoning, when we think about zoning updates, we've done some things that are directly related to the master plan. We can enumerate those in terms of LCD and the proposed zoning changes. And in terms of then, then I see these zoning changes as something we've spent money on and spent time on. And I would like to see us, and they are consistent with the master plan. So I would like to see us push. If we push to have those, that be our top priority. But I think we need a little more time to think about it.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? None. Rebecca, Becky, what do you think of a postponement? Is there a priority for the select board to, is there a rush on this?
No, there's no rush. And it's just something that we, we want to make sure doesn't get lost along the way. And I, I think, you know, I'm, I don't question Greg on this, but I certainly think that to err on the side of caution regarding OML is all, open meeting law is always prudent. So no, nope. I don't think that's a problem waiting. We all have enough on our plates.
That's for sure. Okay, so I think I would like, in considering all, I think I would like to postpone this discussion for the board into a future meeting, and then we will get back to you, Becky, on when we might be ready with some points and slides maybe to present.
Great, thank you. And I do see that Gary and Christina have their hands up.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Chair.
Mr. Russell?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that whenever you do reschedule, I'll watch for the agenda or someone give me a heads up. I would be happy to participate. It, it has been a while since the master plan process ended. And of course, the final editing took some time. And then the pandemic kind of messed up our entire process of being able to finish things up. So I do think it's timely before fall town meeting to take a fresh look at the master plan, maybe go through it section by section. I have some thoughts about missing pieces, but I also think it's important for the public to be reminded of the lengthy and broad process we went through to look at the master plan. And especially in light of some of the comments that I see and hear around town, where people are concerned about what the planning board and others are doing in town. And if you look at the master plan, much of what the work you're doing is directly supported by the master plan and the public process that was behind that. So I encourage this effort. Let me know what you need from me, and I'm happy to help.
Thank you. Christina?
Let's see. Thanks, Ron. So I guess I wanted to touch on this. And in the past, similar topics have come up in regard or as the agenda items for our retreats. Or so I think we've pushed that off for a few years, and I think we need to reinstate that. And maybe that could be an in-person topic at our retreat. I mean, it's what are we looking forward, what do we need to address in the master plan, what are our priorities? So I think the retreat or setting our priorities for the year should be done sooner than later.
Okay. Ms. Tenny?
As someone who participated as a citizen in the master planning process and attended the meetings and gave a lot of feedback, appreciate that we did go through that process. And I read the document, but as a planning board member who's, who stepped on after the completion of that document, I appreciate Gary Russell being here. And if he and Sue could, you know, run through it again, just, I think, the idea of a retreat or another working session where we could kind of run through the priorities and talk about some of the themes that came out strongly in that process. That would be very helpful to me to just kind of reinforce what was heard in that process. So thank you, Gary, for offering.
Okay, sounds good. I'll see if we can schedule something. Okay, so in, not to be in violation, let's move on to the next topic, which is voting on elements of Chris Olley's impact study presentation. From what I understand, Chris, you did not receive any comments from the board, but you went ahead and updated some language and added some impact, added an impact of not making the changes. So I think at this point, I'll turn it over to Sarah.
Um, yeah, Chris and I talked briefly. I think, Chris, I don't know how you want to do this. We, Chris added some, we thought we would try to put the impact work that Chris did into the table and update the table that's on the website. So we thought we'd do those things together. Chris, does that make sense? By looking at the table, which?
Yeah, it does, absolutely.
So I can share my screen. Because I think by having a conversation about the impacts and the, in a couple cases, the opinion that, that Chris came to, or the, maybe it will hone our discussion about that impact analysis. And then if there are, if we change our minds on some of those impacts in that summary way, we can, Chris and whomever is going to work with Chris can go back and revise the, the document, was our thought. Mary, you had a, you have your hand up. Just.
Yeah, I, I actually have a lot of comments on the document. I unfortunately, as Chris knows, deleted it on the SharePoint somehow. But I thought we were going to kind of walk through the document. And I know we just got the table a few days ago. So I mean, we'll definitely be talking about the table. But yeah, I have comments on the document if we want to go over those.
Great.
You want to do it, but.
Let's start with the doc, with, let's start with the table because it's a summary. And then, I mean, we don't, we're not necessarily trying to finalize the document. So let's start with that and see if we can air some of the just the, and do two birds with one stone. And then if we need to come back to, if that's okay. All right. So the idea here is this is the table. A version of the table that's on the website. And so the, the goal here, which we've heard from a number of people, is try to summarize the old version, a new with what's changed. And, and then Chris added in these five, six impacts. Chris, do you want to say anything about those impacts before, in a general way, before we move on?
So these are just placeholders. There may be more of them, which people want to add, which is absolutely fine. There may be, maybe some we don't need to, to list. And so we can take those off. I just was trying to, trying to set up a format here on how we could attempt to do this. And this is what I came up with.
And you want to just give your rating system here?
Yeah. So at first I thought it maybe be a scale like minus five to plus five. And then I thought, well, in fact, and you said that might be too complicated. So I just came up with zero means there's no significant impact. There may be some, but it's not really going to be significant enough to be able to study. One minor sign is some negative impact, a double negative sign is very negative impact, and the same with the positive impacts. And there are lots of questions here. Do we do this in in reference to the master plan? Do we do it in terms of our own feelings? I don't, you know, this is very subjective, and I admit that right from the start. But I didn't know what else to do this except just to put it out there. So.
We may, I, my only suggestion is that we may need to add a question mark when the impact is impossible to, to, to discern.
Reasonable idea. Sure.
Laura, do you want me to, Ron, I'll let you continue to chair them.
Laura, Jenny, sorry.
Okay, thanks. I wonder if the impact should be, instead of significant, instead of positive or negative, maybe it's just more or less impact. I think we're not trying to create any, the purpose of our zoning changes is not to create any negative impact. A lot of this appears to be no impact. I mean, that's sort of the administrative criteria. So maybe there is one more criteria that needs to be, you know, administrative clarity or something like that, that says, here's the reason why we changed the section at all. Because if we change it, it has no impact whatsoever, then why are we bothering to do it? So that might need a little bit additional explanation. But rather than sort of positive, negative, I'll give you an example of one that, under section nine, special residential regulations, I see a downtown business impact plus plus as a extra benefit, increase in population benefits businesses, which you could say, you could say, on the one hand, is true. But I think it's giving up sort of editorializing, whether it's positive or negative. I think we just want to say more or less. Same thing with town character impact, plus or minus, depending on design. I totally appreciate what you're doing here, Chris, or trying to do. And I think this is, like, the table is probably a nice, clear way to get at it. And I think we're getting there. But I think it's, it's starting to surface for me that some of these things maybe just are more or less impact. And that there may be some additional criteria that are needed to say, you know, at a glance, kind of why the zoning changes are proposed. Because if most of this has no impact, then again, why are we doing it? So and I don't think that's the case, but I think that there are, there's a missing criteria, and maybe there's a, a less kind of qualitative, but just, you know, the amount of impact and where, where things are impacted and where they're not. Thank you.
Thanks, Laura. Ms. Foley?
Um, yes, and I know Chris said, I mean, I have, I have about six or seven other impacts that I would like to add. But I'd like, I'd like to see if we could start the discussion maybe at a higher level and see what data we will be using to determine these impacts. Otherwise, they just become kind of subjective, right? So we need, we need some data to actually determine this. And I would recommend that we actually create an impact study subcommittee to do that. Thank you.
Ms., Ms. Delicio?
So I understand and agree with the statement that there there's no proposed project, so we can't predict what aspects or potential impacts this would have. But we can, like, work backwards. We know our school capacity. We know our water capacity. We know certain things. So I think at the opposite end, I think we can work backwards on some of these items. So instead of, as Mary suggested, just using complete, or as the first part of this conversation was just being subjective, I really do think we need to fill in numbers where we have them. And I think schools, water, sewer capacity, we know a lot of these things. We know, I think we know that our downtown is probably at parking capacity. So I guess some of these things, if there's no impact, I don't know if that's actually for being honest with ourselves, what we know. So I think we have numbers, and I think we need to work backwards on some of these.
Oh.
These are administrative. Sarah?
Um, this is always a really hard question on any any regulatory thing, whether it's zoning or, or build out. Well, you know, if we were at capacity in any one of those things, then the neck of the last person in, do they have to buy up, build a new school or build a new water treatment plan or whatever the, that, that is? But I think that we also it's a, it's a I think that we're assuming I mean, that we're, that, that growth is the in almost all of this criticism, that growth is, is the inherent result. More units. And most of these things don't lead us to more units. And in fact, if we take away the more housing units, if we take away, really, the only ones that add access, housing units might be accessory dwelling units, which I think if we were to solve the, the employee housing loophole, could actually create smaller units. This is my opinion. The second thing, the residential cluster just changes the nature of what's currently allowed. So arguably, maybe a few additional units, but very marginal. And senior housing would add units potentially. So that one is. So I think that the, that, that those capacity, those, those numbers that Christine, I'm not sure what data we're going to use. And I don't the, you know, a per student cost, even if we knew we were adding 10 students, the per student cost is not the right way to think about it because you don't know if there, you don't know, it's a fix, it's a we may, it may have actually no cost if there are 10 slots in the district. It could have a, some cost if you need to add a new class. You know, it's this. So I, and then on the fiscal impact school, on a flip side of that is that the school reimbursement rate, even if you don't add a teacher, is dependent on number of students in school. So you could argue that, that more students actually increase revenue to the district, which reduces taxes. So it's not a simple, there is not a simple metric here. And I thought Chris did a good job of trying to articulate them. And I like this approach, at least as a starting point. So.
Laura, Jenny?
So this, yeah, thanks, Ron. This is attempting to look at what we're changing in zoning and the impacts of that. And most of what we're doing is kind of working around the edges of the existing single-family zoning that the town has and is intending to keep is not changing. The, the project, like an SLV project that we'll be talking about later, that is a calculation that is not this, this zoning misses it entirely because it can't govern that. So by the last 40 years of single-family housing development that has not been, you know, subject to these new changes, changes, just our existing zoning, the costs that are in that, because of the lack of affordable housing that we have, has allowed projects like this unfriendly 40B to come through. And our zoning doesn't govern it because we haven't met our affordable housing criteria. So to say that there's a cost that our zoning, or there's an impact that our zoning is going to provide as compared to do nothing, this table doesn't even begin to get added. And maybe there's a way we can kind of summarize that because the, the impacts of doing nothing are that we will continue to feel pressure on affordable housing. And I think we want other kinds of income diverse housing. We'll be talking more about that in our master planning session. But those are costs that the town will bear regardless of, of, you know, these zoning changes. And so you can't, the calculations that we're going to show on these tables don't even begin to touch on the X number of residents and the X number of, you know, town services that are required because those can just go right around zoning because we haven't met our affordable impact. So I, I feel like we're really just, you know, we're, we're endlessly debating about 10% of what's going to change the town with these zoning regulations. The larger issue is we don't have enough affordable housing, and we have single-family zoning that just continues to advance that problem. And so this is one way to, to approach that and to try to make, to try to update our zoning, but we're not really looking at the true cost, I believe.
Mary, Foley?
I, I agree with Laura. And, you know, with, with any of these, we're not, I'm not trying to lower my hand. We're not addressing the affordable housing piece at all. And so that's why I would like to see. And so that's why I would like to see that with the senior housing or with the residential conservation cluster, that we make that a net a net zero in the sense that any units are built. There's that the offsetting affordable unit. So we're not getting further behind that affordable number. We're actually gaining the affordable numbers. So, you know, Laura is 100% right. None of these things are addressing our affordable housing needs. And, you know, we can do some impact analysis on these types of things. But we'll forever be chasing that if we don't address it with zoning.
So how we keep here talking about data and impact analysis where most of these things that were, I mean, so many of these changes are really administrative. And I'm trying to, I'm trying to to, I would like to see us get these administrative things over the finish line. That's where I'm trying to go, and and we are hearing from the public that they want a table. So we need to update this table. When Chris and I have done it, we've gotten criticized that we didn't get board input. So I was going to try to walk us through this. Maybe we take out the impact piece, but people say they want it. So it kind of leaves us between a, you know, we want to have input on the table. We want to have an impact analysis. Most of the changes, in my opinion, don't have a big impact. And maybe if we could just take those. And so that's that's where I'm coming from. I want to get our public material updated. That's, we've got to do that. And it's still, the website's not updated, the table's not updated, the material, the zoning changes aren't updated. And I'm struggling to figure out unless we want to offer, you know, how do we do that specifically? Without, because we have some really good work here that needs to get to the town meeting. And I sure didn't want to come back to in October and have people say, well, the website still isn't updated.
Good point. Mary.
I I agree with what Sarah's saying as well. I think the crux of the problem is, is that the recodification effort did start out really as administrative and getting things up to case law and removing redundancies, administrative, all that. There are chunks of it that have then crept in that have that are are bigger bylaws and and will have impacts, right? So to be honest, my recommendation is that we take these bigger ones out and address them one by one at different town meetings. If we truly want to do an administrative recodification, I think, and and get it over the finish line. I think that's the only way that's going to happen. I think residents are concerned. I think they're looking for data. I think data is hard to provide for people that look at different data, look at data in different ways. Some of this is hard to quantify, and so that's honestly my recommendation.
Thank you, Mary. So I I see this Karen, I wasn't going to take public comment on this. It was kind of a board discussion. But if you can be brief, Karen Bennett, I'll listen to you. We'll listen to you.
Hi, Karen Bennett, 28 Lincoln Street. Thank you for taking the time. One of the things that concerns me as a resident is I like the fact that you're starting to have a table because I think it's pretty confusing for the average resident. So I do like that. What I I'm concerned about is having an impact because I can see that becoming a bit biased. As a voter, I would like to see a very unbiased view on what a yes vote means and what a no vote means. If you want to have the impact potential underneath that, that's fine. But to me, it's that simple. Tell me what a yes vote means to number one and what a no mo- no vote means, and just have them be very factual. I think that's what people need, and I do appreciate everything you guys are doing. I think it's a tough, tough job. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Kathy Bellata will listen.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me okay? Yes. So thank you. First of all, I just want to say I did take a look at the table that was published on the website. I think the team did a great job so far. It's very helpful, the format that you're using. What I would suggest is perhaps thinking about a change in your language rather than trying to take out a crystal ball and defining an impact. You might consider defining risks and opportunities. That's how, you know, in the corporate world, we would, we we don't have crystal balls now, and we don't know what the outcome is going to be. But we can have a good discussion around risks and what they mean financially. And to Christina's point, you know, we do have some capacity constraints in the schools, in the sewer systems, et cetera. So there are some possibility of outlining a risk using some data. And there's also opportunities, you know, wonderful opportunities of meeting, doing better on our affordable housing guidelines. So I just throw that language out there as a suggestion for moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jenny.
In response to Sarah's comment before about what could we do with this table and what are, what information were people looking for? I think we've heard that people are wondering about the change in some of these uses from by right to, or excuse me, from special permit to by right. And perhaps, you know, that could be a criteria in the table that there's just simply a column that you check. By right, special permit, and maybe a little explanation, or we could just do a simple case study. You know, I have a, I have a house that's de minimis, and I'm going to enlarge it by nine inches or something like that. You know, it's that could be difficult because you can't, certainly can't imagine every scenario, but maybe a short illustrative example of what that change might affect would get to clarifying it for people, explaining the by right and the special permit and where they where they are changing. And to Kathy's point, just be more sort of an explanation rather than a, you know, a pro or con. Thank you.
Thanks, Laura. Sarah.
I think that's a good suggestion. Thank you, Laura, and also Kathy. I think those are both good suggestions. As to Mary's point, I tend to agree with Mary on this issue about how we're going to get this stuff over the finish line. So I'm going to propose that, but I want to remind ourselves that we have voted. When majority has voted to move all of these issues to the next town meeting, which was June 11th. And I'm going to propose that we think hard each of us about that. And at the next meeting, I would not going to make any, I would suggest we don't make any motions now, but we all think about strategically. We have a November 14th meeting. What should we have on that meeting? To get to be as successful as possible to. I think we have suffered greatly by four unposted meetings in the lead up to this meeting made it feel like we were hodgepodge and what we're doing. And I I don't want to, I I want to be successful. So I I'm going to suggest that at least I'm going to be willing, I'm going to be ready to make a few motions about which of these we move forward in November. And but it, but I'm going to ask at least that we hope that if if you don't agree, if I, if 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 I'm on the losing side of that motion, whatever that is, that I that that I join with the board to do the best we can to move thing to 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 honor the the board vote. So, you know, we 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 may not all agree, but I think it's worth having another discussion about strategically. What which one should we put forward? So.
So my only comment, it's basically those three items, the senior housing, the kind of the cluster and the ADUs.
I think also non-conforming use.
Yeah, okay, that's for us. Okay. I mean, we could move forward with them and always withdraw them on town meeting floor, but I understand your point.
I think strategically doing that, doing, sorry to interrupt you. I think doing that is may not be strategic. We should, we should, because it creates so much noise about the these these issues that we're talking about, whether it's going to be a positive or a negative impact that it has torpedoed our ability to have stormwater in the general bylaws, to have a strong, a special permit, and to have a use table that you can read. That's concern. So that that we can, I I guess I I would encourage us to think, you know, certainly can debate it now, but think about it hard before the next meeting.
Okay, Christina, sorry.
Thanks, Ron. So I just wanted to throw this out there, and I'd be willing to do a little research on it if the people thought it would be helpful. I threw this out there a while ago, was to at town meeting, offer up a grace period for ADUs to bring the existing illegal ADUs into compliance or a one-year period to apply and get your illegal or non-conforming ADU legal. I personally think that, in my opinion, would be a better step than going forward with a by right ADU. Let's see what we have, let people become legal, give them the opportunity, and then, once we have that information, reassess. But like I said, I could look into that if people thought that would be helpful for the next meeting.
Thank you. Chris, only.
So I guess, Ron, could I get some feedback?
I'll give you some feedback. I think that's a possible idea to talk about. I think the other thing with ADUs is that the special permit process now is totally dysfunctional because it requires a house built between before 1984 on a lot that's twice as big as allowed in in the district. So I think if we took those two things away, we might, maybe that's a compromise on ADU.
I think there's some way, we need some kind of a carrot to get people to come into compliance with the units that they.
I think that's something we can talk about at a future meeting. I do want to respond to Sarah, however. I think, you know, there, it's kind of interesting that we're at a point where the Board of Slickman wants us to implement the master plan. And now we're saying, well, but we're not going to, we're not going to implement the parts of it that we can, which are in the in the zoning bylaw. It doesn't make any sense. We're either, either we rescind the master plan and not go forward with these things, or we're implementing the master plan, and here, here you go, town. This is what you wanted to do in the master plan. Here's how we implement it. So what are you going to do? I think for us to to back off and think that we're cowered by the master plan recommendations is ill-fated. I think we should, either we're for it or against it. And if we're not for it, we're not a planning board, frankly. So I guess I say we go forward.
Thanks, Chris. I'm wondering on these illegal ADUs, how, who, how do we find them? And people are going to come forward and say, I have an illegal ADU, or what's what's the thinking on finding these? I was just trying to think of how that would work. So.
Christina's speaking, but you have your, she's muted.
Oh, sorry, Ron. I thought you were asking me that question. So other communities have amnesty periods, whether it's six months or a year, and we have criteria, what we would need to establish. And if the illegal units meet this criteria, then they're grandfathered in some way. I mean, we'd have to talk about it, and I would research it. But I've, years ago, when we started this, looked into it, but it's in a folder somewhere tucked away because some people didn't think it was a good idea. But I think the public, in my opinion, to Chris's conversation and points and to Sarah's, I think this is a lot. Our town has a lot going on right now. And I think with SLV and the senior development and the DPW site, and I mean, we can keep going on. I think with the zoning change, people think it is too much. So maybe trying to get through this finish line with some of these administrative changes and then taking the other portions slowly is not a bad approach at this point. If we didn't have SLV, if we didn't have cell signaling, if we didn't have the DPW site. And I mean, we have a lot of internal structural facility needs that we still need to get on board and get going with versus all this other new develop, 40A. I mean, the list goes on. So I mean, I think there is valid concern that there is a lot of things that we may not be able to foresee unintended consequences with all this proposed new zoning and development.
Can I just respond to Chris? I just want to make sure I, my point is more clarified. Chris, I want to get these things done. I didn't spend all this time to not do it. I didn't watch last night minutes till 11 o'clock last night, writing minutes to get, not get these things done. My question is how do we strategically get them done? A special town meeting is smaller numbers of people, and people who are against certain things can get more people, a higher percentage of their people there. It's about, it's a strategy. It's not a, I'm not saying we abandon them. I'm simply saying, when do we take them up? So that's my point. Because as a board, we can't seem to move all of them forward with unanimity. And so let's take up the ones that we can move forward with unanimity so that we you know, so that we look strong and have success. And maybe take up, maybe pick one of the hard. I do also think that the ADU discussion needs more work. I don't know what an illegal, currently illegal ADU is because if it existed prior to the exact ADU law, whatever that illegal ADU, I don't understand what that means. As someone who has a ADU in my house that came with it and is legal according to, you know, whatever that means. It's not registered because there's no place to register it. So I think the ADU question remains complicated. And I feel that the existing exemption for employees has to be wrapped into that. And I think if we made the, personally think that if we made the existing employee issue go away, deleted that, and just had real ADUs that are nine hundred square feet instead of these enormous things where people are hiring their mother to, you know, have a ADU, then we would solve that we, that we would advance it. I guess the point being, I think there is some agreement that ADUs need some more work. But maybe we could do a small group or something. Sorry to butt in there, but I do want to pass this.
Thank you, Sarah. Mary, Ms. Follin.
Yeah, and I I just, I just wanted to, and I know Chris knows this, but for anybody that's listening, I mean, the master plan is a guide, and if we put a pause on some things, that doesn't mean we're not you know, looking to the master plan and and trying to implement things that are in there. It's, it it doesn't need to be done at a certain time. It's kind of a guide that we work towards. So I just wanted to to make that clear. If we think it's smarter to kind of put a pause on a few things and do it a little more cohesively, I I don't see that that's going against the master plan.
Thanks, Mary. Laura, Jenny.
I just want to respectfully and strongly disagree with the statement that we should be pausing some of these zoning as they're too radical a change or something. None of this is a radical change. These are well within the bandwidth of what municipalities all around us are doing to update and clarify and strengthen their zoning laws. That's what we're doing. We're strengthening zoning laws. We're updating them. We're looking to increase the environmental protections with performance-based zoning. So and the master plan is written. It's a guide. It doesn't spell out every single thing in the roadmap, but we've got it, and we need to use it. And so I really, I'm going to be a strong advocate for finishing the job here with our zoning. None of this is crazy or radical stuff. This is all kind of the daily bread and butter of municipal zoning regulation. And I'd like to think that we could finish it by working together.
Okay. Thanks, Laura. Okay. Thanks, Laura. Um, Sue Brown. Hi, Sue, welcome.
Thanks, Ron. Um, I, I do want to just say that, um, I think Kathy, um, offered some language um, that I think is exceptionally useful. And I think that if we start thinking about the risks and opportunities, it might allow people to better understand the issues, because I am quite confident that if, um, the town had worked on some of these issues and gotten them taken care of, then we wouldn't be looking at, um, some of the issues that we are looking at, for example, the 40B. So a 40R had that gotten developed, could have saved off the 40B. We were working towards that. Um, I think, I think looking at opportunities and really thinking about the risks of not doing anything, continuing to not um, make changes, even if they're difficult, even if they bring up controversy, I think your, the town is going to be stuck. They're not going to improve um, the diversity in housing, and I think these do a lot, even if um, for the diversity of housing, I think it makes a huge difference, and I think your schools are at risk. I think, um, I think your entire, um, I think your community is at risk if you don't, um, start making some of these changes and allowing this. Um, so um, I hope that you will move forward, and, um, I appreciate Sarah being strategic. Um, I do, but I hope that, um, through our language, the way we look at it, and maybe the risks and opportunities is part of that, um, that maybe it's a, um, we take away some of the fear um, of these changes. And I applaud Chris for what he did to try to do that. Um, so thank you all for your good work and I'll let it go at that.
Thank you, Sue. Mr. Russell.
Uh, thanks, Ron. Um, so the, the idea of, um, perhaps postponing some of the zoning changes that you've proposed. Um, well, I'm not on the board anymore, so I don't have a say. And frankly, I don't have a strong opinion about what the best direction is for that. Um, but I am concerned that, um, if you look at this work in terms of risk and opportunity, which I agree is, um, a really smart way to evaluate the proposals. I think you should do the same thing with, you know, what are the risks of bringing all of it to town meeting? And look at ways you can minimize the risk of essentially losing a lot of, um, good and, um, good work that took a long time for the board as well as others to come up with. Um, so perhaps it's as simple as separating pieces as separate votes. Um, in any case, as, as has been pointed out, the public process is, it, it is democracy, but as we, we've seen, democracy can be messy and oftentimes flawed in terms of, is it truly representative of what the entire community wants? So I do have some concerns about, um, a smaller voting public at a fall town meeting, and in particular, I think, uh, since I've been away from the board, um, I've, I've been more in tune with sort of the, uh, well, what was mentioned is the noise in the community around planning issues. And, um, the 40B came along, and as Sue Brown pointed out, it really derailed a process where we were trying to work on, um, opportunities to solve some of these problems. And my concern is that, um, all the folks who have been fighting against the SLV, and I, and I believe personally rightly so, it's a, it's a bad project. It doesn't fit our vision um, in any way for the town. But that whole issue gets confused with all of your planning work. And so there's, you need to recognize there's this huge dark cloud around the word planning in general hanging over the town. And so a lot of folks out there see proposed zoning changes and they visualize SLV. Um, they visualize, um, the, the draft proposal from, um, Governor Baker as, and, and so there's a lot of, um, there is a lot of, I would say, I don't want to say it's disinformation. There is certainly some misinformation. Um, but there's also just a lot of reflexive, um, opinions that don't necessarily have the background and the context that has gone into the work that you've done. So, um, you, I would suggest that the board needs to really recognize that there is this cloud hanging over all of your work and think about ways to really address it head-on. And, and not that it is to, to try to, try to squash any voices. Of course, all opinions are welcome, but, um, sometimes opinions are really emotional reactions, um, being presented as opinions and, and they're clouded by a lack of context or mixing up different jurisdictions or different issues. So I think um, clarity and separation of those issues is really important for the work that you do.
Thank you, Gary. Rebecca.
Hi, um, thank you, Ron. Um, I just wanted to, um, somewhat try to clarify the reason that the, the board, the select board wants to bring forward the master plan. And, um, we know you all have so much on your plates, and I, I don't think anybody could have said it better than Gary Russell just did. We, we would like to get the master plan re-looked at. In part because we're being faced with an unintended consequence, that unintended consequent, uh, quince of not working on our master plan is SLV. And so I, I just, that's one of the reasons we don't want to, sorry about that, don't want to lose, um, the momentum that, uh, not even momentum, but that's why it's, we'd like to bring it before the board, select board, um, and not be caught in another situation, um, like the SLV or other situations. Um, sorry, I got distracted by my puppy, so I kind of lost some of my thoughts on that, but, um, and that's why. So while it's not a high priority, it is a priority. Um, and I hope I didn't make that too muddy. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Christina.
Thanks, Ron. Um, I just wanted to like step back and just ask each other to really listen to what we're saying. I heard, um, Laura mentioned the word radical. I, I, that was the first time I heard it tonight. I know we hear things different ways, but I think we really need to be on the same page and make sure that we're listening, truly listening to each other and our concerns. And if I use the word illegal, I'm sorry with the ADUs, I'm really looking to capture and, um, get a number of things that may have been grandfathered, things that may have been here for a long time. I just, things that we don't have data for. So not necessarily, not necessarily illegal, uh, maybe that was a bad point, choice, word choice of my point. Um, but I would like to have data before we go forward. I think the public is looking for those kinds of information, and I think we deserve to give it to them. So my final point was, I, Gary's point, um, noise, I don't think we did a good job of telling the what we wanted to do at this, with this recertification. So I think we need to do a better job and listen to the public and listen to each other. Thanks.
Thanks, Christina. Um, Sarah.
I, I know that Christina and Mary have talked about the ADU just as one subset of the data. I think I'd like to ask them if they could go to the assessors and try to meet with them and try to figure out how many existing ADUs we have. That might be, um, uh, maybe there's a download of assessors' records that, but, but maybe you guys could go to the assessors and, and try to, to uh, figure that out. And you could start, I, I'll save you one trip. We have one at our house. So, but go and have a conversation with the assessor and then come back with at least, maybe there's a way to take just a portion of the town and go through every record and, and extrapolate. You know, take 10% of the town, calculate that there are 10 ADUs and then say, okay, then there are 100, you know, whatever, I, whatever method you want, but um, I think that Sue has tried and, and has not been able to figure out how to do it. So, um, I think that would be really helpful and, um, be great if you guys could, one of you could like sit down with the assessor and see how we get that data.
I'd be happy to. And I think, um, I don't know if we need to make a motion, but maybe talk, agree to have Mary and I do that. I'm not gonna be ready for Mary, but I'm happy to do that.
Um, Mary.
I have all the data from the assessor's office. Um, they do not parse things out. The building inspector does not note anything on his records, and I, I was kind of hoping through this process, when we've been asking for data for years on these, and we don't have any, that I would see a new process in place that going forward, they would be tracked differently, but I still have not seen that, um, come out of town hall. But I have all the data, but you can't determine. They're just grouped in as two-family, uh, multi-unit. You know, you can't, you can't tell by looking at the GIS saying, you know, some will say, you know, um, accessory dwelling unit, but most do not, um, that actually are accessory dwelling units. You can't see an increase in tax. You can't, it, um, I, I do hope we see a process going forward, but I, and you know, unless there's kind of a grassroots effort that we send out a mailing to people or some such thing, I don't know how you're going to track it. I've tried.
I was, I have heard that information and that I was willing to try and take like a neighborhood, the second part of your conversation, Sarah, and see what we can extrapolate from, um, I know there's a bunch in my neighborhood. I'm in a denser neighborhood than others, so I'll take a stab at that.
Laura.
I just wanted to respond to Christina's earlier comment, which I appreciated about listening to each other and, um, really committing to work together. And, you know, we all have invested a lot of time and energy in this, and so I appreciate your perspective, Christina, and I can always do better too about listening and really trying to work together and being, really hearing what the other parties are saying. So I just want to say that I, for one, the board, if I, you know, ever escalate things in my passion for trying to get this work done, then I apologize and I, and I do commit to, um, working with you all, uh, with, um, much honesty and integrity as we all bring to this every day and, and really trying to be good partners and, and listening to each other. So I just wanted to thank you, Christina, for the comment.
Thanks, Laura. Sue Brown.
Thanks, Ron. Um, I know, um, data has been asked for, but I, at the very, when you ask for data, I think you need to know what you're going to do with it. And I really just wonder what it would tell us, um, how it would help us make a decision by knowing how many ADUs, whether, um, counted, not counted, when they were created. How does that help us decide, um, anything? Because the basic fact is that we need more diverse housing. So whether there are 20 in town or there are 200 in town, we know that it's not adequate. So while I can appreciate getting them on the books, I can appreciate getting data about them, and it would be great if there is some way to track it going forward, so we know how to do it. I just wonder if this is data that's needed to make the decisions that we need to make, or that you as a board need to make.
Thanks. So, um, Ms. Tenney.
Maybe it's not a decision point. Maybe it's just context. It gives you a sense of scale, since, um, you know, if people feel like it's a useful data point, it's just one more, one more kind of scale metric. Talks about how many do we have? I, I don't see it as being a decision point myself. I agree with the statement that we need more diverse housing.
Okay, I think, um, where do we want to go from here? I think we want to start to think about getting something out to the public in, in some form or another, and, um, we go back to the table, uh, Sarah, and try to figure out if, if we should move this at all, or Chris should go back to the drawing board and take some of these comments on, uh,
So, can I respond to-
Take out the impacts and, and make this just, go ahead.
But I think that the, I, that I think that some of us felt that the risk and opportunity or, um, administrative change was at least one good way to, to think about this. And then that helps us to reflect the risk that Laura articulated about, um, additional coastal 40Bs, for example, um, as a, as a risk that, that maybe doesn't fall on the table, but could be articulated in the larger. So I'd like to suggest that, um, uh, Chris and, and I, although my next two weeks is going to be tough, um, but, uh, take another stab at this table uh, and get it out for comments. Um, and maybe the impact piece aside, if people can, uh, use track changes and make comments to the table, we need to get enough, you know, any updates that people want to see, um, onto the website, we can get those up. But, um, I think it's kind of late to do it. Try to walk through it now. I think, I think this has been a useful discussion. Um, and, uh, but that would be my proposal. Um, Chris, does that make sense to you?
Oh, I like the idea of doing the risk and opportunity. Part of my intention in putting this detail into this thing was to, was to demonstrate how little impact most of the zoning changes are going to have on the town. They're really, they are administrative. They're really three or four key policy changes that might, and I think for those talking about risk and opportunity is probably a good idea. And I'd be happy to reformat the, the mini-tables and try it again. As long as people understand that when we're changing the purpose and intent of the, the lang, the language that specifies the purpose and intent of the zoning bylaw, that's not going to change anything in the town. It's just stating what we're doing. Um, and as long as we can say that clearly and not try to come up with data to show that there's no change to the, to the town as a result of this, except maybe we can all sleep easier or get through meetings faster. Uh, maybe that, I, I'm all for it. Let's, let's do it. I'll try it out. I'll do another draft and get it out to everybody as soon as I can.
Sounds like a plan. Any objection for Chris doing that? Okay. That'd be great. I, I think we want to continue with, you know, trying to get a postcard out to the, to the membership once it's decided. Try to figure out a tentative date and agenda for a workshop down the road. So some, some public, uh, we, we got to get our word out to the public, and I don't want to really wait till October. I think we should move on this soon. Okay, thanks. Um, so discussion on the table for a website. Sarah, I think we've discussed that, correct?
Yes.
So, um, at our last meeting, um, we, um, we're going to give the ZBA, uh, we have a deadline at, um, I think it's July 27th to get them, um, our opinion on, uh, the proposed, uh, 40B development. So I put in our packets, the letter we sent to the select board way back, uh, months ago, and, um, and that went on to mass housing. But subsequent today, I received a memo, uh, from Laura who, um, wrote, um, actually, Laura, if you want to explain what you did.
Sure, Ron. So I read, just this morning, I read the letter from 2020, and I wasn't sure that appeared to be a draft, so I wasn't sure whether that was actually submitted at the time, or if it was, um, as I'd understood to be just sort of a starting point. Excuse me, I'm gonna let the dog out squeaking. One second, sorry. Okay, dog, get out.
Must be dog night.
It is dog night, sorry. Um, so, uh, and I was not on the board when that letter was written, and of course, we're not, um, we are not, most of us are not following the site plan review as closely as the ZBA is, not being the regular, regulating board. So as I read through it, I thought, well, that was 2020- So as I read through it, I thought, well, that was 2020. The project has evolved. And we're, as we're not close enough to the project to provide any kind of detailed site review in our letter, if we're to write a letter. And honestly, I, I just wrote the letter to sort of think through my thoughts about it, not to, not to suggest that the board, you know, should write a letter. But I felt that the 2020 letter maybe wasn't up to date, or you know, that we might cast it a different way if we decide to write it. So I also happened to be at that time, reading through, kind of reading through the open space and recreation master plan that recently got submitted to and approved by the state as required to, you know, be eligible for grant funding and every seven years as we're required to do. And then was also just refreshing myself on the 2019 master plan as we were talking about it tonight. So I wrote a draft letter pulling out as much as I could from some really good context that was written into the open space and recreation plan, referencing Horton, Horson, Whitley and some of the other consultant work there. And then sort of just thinking about what are some of the kind of criteria that we would look for if this were a special permit in the LCD, where if it wasn't an unfriendly 40B, the regulatory board would have more authority about requiring special permit conditions. And so the letter basically points to those two documents, the open space and recreation plan, which is state approved. I mean, I think ultimately the audience for this letter is perhaps the state, you know, if the, if the, so we have to make a case that says, you know, we're, we're committed to finding ways to make more affordable housing, which this project is providing as the state has required so that it can, and you know, go around these zoning requirements. But that as we've said in some of these reported documents, the state has accepted as kind of approved documents that we have some conditions that are quite, that are not conducive to that type of development or scale development on this particular site. So the, just some highlights that the open space plan makes note that municipal sewage treatment is essential for a high density development, given the preponderance of our poorly percolating soils, that the adjacent cedar swamp is a major water recharge, charge area for the town that must be protected, that the steep slope development, the runoff and other impacts from a development at that, of that nature would have, that would be detrimental on the environmental conditions around it. And then looking to our master plan saying that we were working as a town towards accommodating both more affordable with a capital A and income diverse housing. And so our objection to the project as a planning board, and this is my statement, you can decide if it's true, but if not to the number of housing units per se, but to this woeful mismatch of the project's scale and massing and the infrastructure services required to build a project of this scale on this very environmentally sensitive greenfield site. And so things that come from our master plan, safe, accessible, appropriate housing, transportation and mobility choices, planned development in our LCD, which this is expressly not planned development. It's just, you know, we wouldn't, we would never approve a project of this nature on that site. And then assurance that projects mitigate development impacts on critical resources. So things like compatible with town character, natural environment, view shed protection from South Street and from the adjacent conservation land, preventing and mitigating environmental degradation, connecting to municipal septic, I think I meant sewer there. That's management practices for low impact development, emphasis on walkability, pedestrian oriented biking environments and so forth. So we, you know, we are proposing development in our LCD. So I don't think we're saying it's too far from the town center or, you know, that the LCD itself is not appropriate for a development of a certain scale, but that this project, because it is not a planned development and it is so such a negative environmental impact and does not preserve the town's natural or kind of cultural characters is not, is a detriment to the town and that we would, as a planning board, not support the development were we the regulatory authority. So just put that out there. I know people didn't have much time to read it, but it was kind of a way to get my thoughts down this morning and welcome comments. Thanks.
Yeah, any comments from the board on, on, I know that was right and there wasn't much time to read it. We need to get something out to the ZBA, at least voted through at our, if not tonight, at our next meeting, because we'll have two days, then to transmit it to Sarah's ZBA. Sarah?
Yeah, Laura, thank you so much for doing that. It's on Summer Street, not, I mean, on School Street, not South Street. And a couple of comments were added down the, on the draft, but I think it's excellent. And just so you know, the original draft was folded into the town's draft, became actually almost fully incorporated in the Board of Selectmen's response that was sent to DHCBD. So that's what, that's what happened with our draft. So it didn't just sit. But I think it's great and I would support it as basically as written with the couple of suggestions. I think people have chimed in on the, online. So thank you and, and great. The only thing that's not in here is the financial stuff that we've all felt was. But maybe it is not really our jurisdiction.
Thanks, Sarah. Christina, Delicia?
Yes, quickly reiterate, thank you so much, Laura. So I think my comments are obvious. I think you captured a lot of this. My concern is that we are contradicting ourselves maybe here versus with any other development with the sewer capacity. I think we have, the moratorium's been lifted, but that moratorium, the letter from the state is pretty clear that we need to limit additional new hookups. So I want to make sure that we're not suggesting something that we don't have authority for. I guess maybe that's not the best use of words, but the state DEP did send us a letter. And I think that quote language there was what they had said that we should limit new hookups. So I want to make sure that this thing that we want, that Metro doesn't want to hook up with the sewer. Does that make sense? I think it's just to leave it in my opinion that it's not appropriate for the air.
So what I'm thinking about as I'm listening to you is, what I don't want to say is that it's appropriate for an onsite septic system according, if you read the open space and recreation plan that and I, and I actually don't know where the, I think the project's gone back and forth. So I don't know where it sits on this. Pardon the pun. I don't know where the sewage sits on the site at the moment. Maybe Sue does. Do we need to address that item?
I would just say that it, well, it has not been resolved. The town just received a sewer and water report today. So it'll be a, a subject of a future meeting.
Do you know, Sue, what is currently proposed? Is it onsite or municipal hookup?
Municipal hookup currently.
So maybe some wording like there is not municipal sewer in this area, therefore the planning board does not recommend. I maybe not saying that they should connect to the sewer, maybe just leave it as they're, and it's not appropriate.
Yeah, I mean, maybe what I can, I think I was trying to make the point that that an onsite sewer system would not be the right response to the development. Maybe I can somehow say that with and remain silent on the actual hookup, but more address the, this site.
I mean, there is no sewer there. So I would just say, because there is no sewer, I mean, onsite isn't appropriate.
I mean, there's no, there is town sewer on School Street though, right?
I believe that's going to be run up to the site and that they, they do plan to connect to the municipal sewer. So I think they're going to connect and run the sewer up School Street.
There is no sewer on School Street, I think is the bottom line. So I think a factual statement right now from us is that there is no sewer capacity on School Street. Therefore, the planning board does not feel that this is an appropriate use. Onsite wastewater treatment is not appropriate for this area. That's kind of where I was trying to summarize this to go.
Okay, so there's no sewer on School Street currently. Yep. And that onsite wastewater, I think we can say that there's no school, there's no, currently there's no sewer service in School Street, fact. And that onsite wastewater treatment is not appropriate, given these other documents, what they've stated.
Yeah. Yeah, also, excuse me for interrupting, but there was also a study in maybe five, six years ago of sewer needs and there's significant existing built built and buildings, houses mostly on elsewhere in town with failing sewers and environmental risk. Raymond Street and West Manchester and other places, but Raymond Street is in particular, where the, the conclusion of that sewer study, I believe, was that the sewer capacity needed to be, I would say that, you know, why would we have hooked, why would we leave problem, environmental problems undone and give sewer capacity to this project? Doesn't make any sense. So that's, I think that's another piece. I added that note.
Ron, if I may, it's Becky.
That's good.
As one of the water and sewer overseers, that is correct. It, it, it's on School Street, but it does not go across 128. That brings in a whole different level. And as Sarah said, we have a study that does show where we have significant needs, which could end up with very detrimental impacts if they're not addressed in terms of tying into town sewer.
Thanks, Rebecca. Mary Foley?
So thank you for doing the letter, Laura. I haven't seen it, so I'd like the chance to be able to see it. I don't know when it was posted. And I haven't seen.
I just, I wrote it this morning. So it hasn't been up long.
I haven't seen comments people have written, but I, I think perhaps we should mention those comments at the meeting if they're, if they're available. But I do have the letter from the DEP that was from December and the, I think what Becky and what Sarah and people have been referencing is the CWMP plan does, does not recommend any major sewer extensions to any additional areas in the town, except for a small, limited area of potential commercial development. And then those ones that have already been identified in the CWMP, like those, like the, the places that Sarah mentioned. So if that can somehow get in that letter that, you know, we are, we need to abide by that, these regulations that have been given to us. But I'll, I'll take a look at that letter and hopefully we can discuss it next meeting. Thank you.
Can I respond to that, Ron?
Thanks, Mary. Go ahead, Laura.
I'm just seeing the comments too. They've been written on the sharepoint. So I, I read the letter this morning, early this morning. I wrote the letter early this morning and posted it. It got posted sometime midday. So I realized everyone hasn't had, not everyone's had a chance to look. I'm happy to, there are a few comments from board members. I'm happy to just talk those through now, if that's helpful.
Let's go through the rest of the hands up and then we can do that.
They're fairly minor if people want to do.
Okay. Do that.
Oh. Sorry. Yeah.
I happen to be reading the CDW MP report and it considered six areas and at least to my reading comprehension, the LCD is one of the areas that is recommended that we reserve sewer capacity for. Um, that and, and I can, I can send you copies of the tables. They considered six areas and for most of the areas, the primary recommendation was to continue using private septic. And the one where a sewer extension was recommended as the, as the best alternative was the LCD. I'm somewhat confused by the argument, both that onsite septic is unacceptable and that connecting to the sewer is unacceptable. I'm not sure exactly where that would leave them. So if, if you need more backup, the, the comprehensive waste treatment management plan is about 500 pages and I don't recommend it for light reading.
I didn't see him. Christina?
I thought we were going through the comments, that we're gonna start at the beginning. And I think the bottom line is the LCD is not zoned for housing. So when we did the comprehensive wastewater treatment, it was for commercial development. So it wasn't intended for housing, which is not zoned in the LCD. So, um, I, I was, my hand was raised. Sorry. I'm just, I'll raise it again when we start to go through. So the argument is to me that we're sending a letter. There is no sewer there. So there is no line to connect. And this is an environmentally sensitive area. So I don't think they need to really conflict each other. It's just stating facts. There is no sewer there and wastewater treatment facility or wastewater treatment is not appropriate for this site.
Understood. Laura, did you want to, I made you co-host. Did you want to share? Did you want to throw up the comments?
Oh, sure. Give me a moment. Okay, let me enlarge it so people can see a little better.
Yeah, good.
Okay, is that working? Okay, so just starting from the top here. Christine, Christine's response to my comment about municipal sewer treatment is essential for high density development, given the town's preponderance of poor percolating soils. Again, I took that from the open space report should also include specifics such a grade of driveway, single access and the fact that although municipal sewers ideal, the sewer does not recommend any major sewer expansion. So, and then Sarah said, the sewer study identified town needs of existing buildings needed available sewage capacity to resolve existing environmental problems elsewhere in town. And see the CWMP. So I think that's what we've been talking about, changing that statement to that the existing site is inappropriate for onsite treatment. I mean, this really goes down into the, or a treatment. And no sewer exists in School Street north of 128. I was not going to go into grading of driveway, single access and all that. I've not been involved in the site design review. So I'm trying to keep it about the existing conditions of the site rather than what's proposed in the top part of this letter. If that is making sense to people. So I'll always turn that into a sentence, but I'm just writing notes as we go. And then the next one that I'm seeing, so on the site, while the site does fall within the LCD, a special comment. Sorry, go ahead.
Three rates it was dated.
Having trouble hearing you, Christina. You're a little broken up.
I'm sorry, I, I have internet connection tonight, but I think I'm 2020 CMP, but we were under a moratorium and there's a December 7th letter which reiterates that wastewater management plan. And it clearly states that we need to be careful of connecting and make sure that we take care of our areas of concern first. So limited area of potential commercial development. So I don't know, I can send you this letter. Someone from the town can, we all should have a copy of this letter to make sure that we're all on the same page, but it, it's a, it's a more recent letter. It's December of 2021. So.
And it's talking about the hookups for the, the capacity.
Sewer capacity. Yeah. So it's basically lifting the moratorium and it's an approval with content and termination of sewer connection moratorium. So the exact language is, the CWMP does not recommend any major sewer extensions to any additional areas in the town, except for a small, limited area of potential commercial development. So that is from the letter from the DEP dated December 7th, 2021. I would not categorize this as fitting into that description. Fitting into that description.
Okay, maybe you can send me the letter. I mean, what I was calling from was the open space plan and it doesn't talk about this in the open space plan. So I was not, I was really trying to sort of stick to those as our guidelines, but I will certainly take a look if you want to send me that letter. Okay, so then. Were you making an additional comment here about the special permit typically required?
Yeah, I would just maybe just work that in there that this area is not zoned for housing period. Just a simple statement, just to make sure that we, that's clear.
Well, here's something I just want, I want to, I can, I can put that in. I think that the, if we come. If we write a letter that sounds like we don't want housing. Then I'm just concerned that we're not really making a good case to the state that we are thinking about ways to. Accommodate different types of housing. And so. I was not objecting to it in the sense that it was housing, but in the sense that it was environmentally. You know, unsuited to this, to this site. So I want to be careful about saying we don't think housing belongs up here because we need to show a good faith effort of trying to find new types of housing and avoiding a 40B project again.
I don't think that's the argument that's going to win us a denial on this. I think it's going to be environmental factors and I think it's. Be safety. So that's why the two things that I was. Wanted to make sure that we're in there was the driveway and the environmental. So. Um, I I see your point on that. Is there some way maybe that we can bring into or finalizing some kind of potential housing on the opposite side that's already disturbed, something to that?
Well, that would certainly, I mean, if you're going to put this product on, you put it on the other side where there's already disturbed land and you could cite it much more sensitively, right?
Right.
I mean, that's the, I think that's the point I was trying to make and I didn't elaborate on it, just pulled it from the master plan about the plan development in the L C D. Maybe, you know, it's something like where. Housing. Uh, may be more suitable or.
Yeah, yeah, no, exactly. Yep. Environmentally disturbed. Yeah, exactly. All of that.
Yeah. Something to that effect. Okay.
Can I jump in here? Can I just jump in?
Yes, please.
Mary and I are working with Sue with M A P C consultant to actually. Create the regulations for that would allow housing in this part of the L C D. We weren't intending to do anything with it. It was just, yeah, I think we all talked about this at the last meeting, but I wonder if we should. Included it here as some of the evidence that the town is. It would be considering. Alternative sites for housing in a, in a better environmental situation.
That's a statement we could make. It seems like that would be helpful to demonstrate that we're actively working on it.
And our proposed senior housing is allowed in the L C D.
That's also true.
So Chris, maybe you could give me some words about that.
Yeah, I can. We'll have to get married to approve it.
You want to give me some words now while we're all together? Some of these, I mean, I'm gonna. You know, I'll try to characterize it as where it comes from the master plan and where we're. I think these are all, again, we're sort of talking about implementing what we, the priorities of the master plan, right? So as long as it fits within that theme, I think it's. It's a theme of the letter. So if you have words for me during the meeting that you want to just give me a rough cut and I'll try to massage it.
So I guess I'm saying that, correctly, if I'm off base here, Mary, that the planning board is. Completing a project, currently completing a project. Which would, or which could. Result in the creation of an overlay district. Within this part of the L C D. Which would allow. The development of affordable.
Reverse.
Housing. I think we said by right, right, Mary?
Um, so the housing piece was if it's attached to assisted living.
Well, there is that too, but there was also, you made the point of allowing a freestanding affordable. Housing by right in within this overlay district. Maybe I misunderstood.
No, no, that's right. That's probably right. I mean, I wanted the small cluster of like, you know, maybe three townhomes and I. Think we're currently at 10, so that seems big to me, but that's, that's neither here nor there right now.
Yeah. I think all we're doing is. Proving that we're. Working on it.
Right.
Okay. Okay, and then Sarah corrected me. I wrote South Street. She said School Street. Christine said, I said municipal septic. I think I really meant to say sewer there, but is that where you're saying hilltop removal is related to? What's that?
Um, it's just a word that that's a buzzword that they've been using. I just thought we could. Throw that word back in there where you were saying. Destruction of.
You're having a blasting and bedrock removal? Is that what you're talking about? Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll look at some words that. Communicate that better, the extent of earth removal. Okay, and then this one we've discussed, I think, right? And I also meant to say sewer, but I'm going to change that to to reflect what's above. And then Sarah should add a bullet that the town has strong bylaws governing ledge removal and earth removal for the purposes of. And these far exceed. Okay, so that would go up here. Oops, sorry. SharePoint frozen up on me.
I think that big point is that the quantities are just, you know, that the quantities are enormous. So, and that they. But it doesn't, yeah, right. That's where it belongs.
Right, so I have a little work to do to get it into full sentences again and clean it up. Did I capture everyone's points? I will try to clean this up tonight and put it, well, it'll still be this, the SharePoint document, so I'll just clean it up right here and people can take a look at it and.
Is there any deadline? Is there any advantage in getting it to them as soon as possible? If so, I'd be happy to make a motion. Is there, is there, I'm not.
I, I don't, I don't think.
I don't.
I don't think there's a rush on this. Sarah, I do. I do think Laura, if you clean it up and put it in the July 25th meeting packet.
Okay, I can do that. I thought that we heard there was. This had to be in before the date of the last meeting and that Sarah was looking for it.
She wants it on the 27th, from what I understand, which means.
So if it's on the 25th, is that going to give us enough time to?
Well, that's the other thing she said in her letter to me that. We could either email it to them or we can have a representative from our board. Bring it to them and answer any questions. So I think we could clean it up, vote on it on the Monday, two weeks. And then have a rep representative go to the meeting with that, you know, we can. Send this ahead and then have someone go to Z B A and answer any questions, or we could just send it to them and maybe we don't need a representative. But I think it's pretty self-explanatory, but I'll take. Whatever the board's opinion is on that, on doing that.
I'm unavailable that night on the 27th, so I can't volunteer to.
I think maybe what what we'll do if nobody, I mean, I can, I can bird dog it and go to the meeting or we could just send it on ahead. They've had a lot of peer review on this. I know it's, I'm not trying to belittle this, but I I think it's, it's good that we get it to them. I don't know if it needs any further explanation, but I think it's pretty concise. So. So why don't we do that, Laura? Just put it in the packet on the 27th and anybody has any different, clean it up. If anyone has any additional comments. Put them, put them in as you've done, and if there's not. I mean, I could send it on, well, we'd have to vote, vote it through.
I have a question, but Christina's got her hand up and then I have a question.
Sorry, Christina.
Oh, it's okay. I. I just thought there's no rush, so let's just make it. We've waited this long. We might as well just make sure it's good to go. There's no reason to rush it.
So yeah, I think that's the best, best policy. Let's vote it through on the 25th.
Okay, logistical question, may I?
Yes.
Should I go ahead and put it on town letterhead, planning board letterhead and make these changes? So it's gonna, I'm gonna take it out, put it on a letterhead and put it back in the, well, I'll send it to Sue when she can put it back in the SharePoint. With the comments incorporated. And then we can vote on it. Does that sound okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm happy to give the letter.
Okay, great. Anything, any more comments on that? So moving to the Bobrowski invoice 5805, we received an invoice on the 31st of. Was it May? I think. With $925. And that leaves us with 3875 left in the budget for Bobrowski, which is around 15 hours. So with that in mind, I'd like to take a motion to approve the invoice.
Almost.
There a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Roll call vote? Ms. Peyton?
Yes.
Mr. Lucio?
Yes.
Ms. Foley?
No.
Mr. Gil, Mr. Only?
Yes.
Ms. Tanny?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, so it's. Five, one. Approve.
Ron, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead. Who's, who's speaking? Hello?
Hi.
You're breaking up.
Sorry, it's my internet's bad tonight. I don't know what's going on. I was curious, where's the information about the. The invoicing for the A and R that Mr. Bobrowski provided? I didn't see that reflected in any other emails or invoices.
I think we discussed that. So wasn't that paid out as something else?
Yeah, that was not planning, that was not planning board budget. That was not that project. That was my professional services budget.
Okay, so it was not the plan, it wasn't directed towards the planning board? I'm sorry, I wasn't.
It was not paid. He was, I didn't use, the planning board did not pay that out of these, those funds. That was my professional services budget.
Okay, can we still see the invoice?
I don't even, which I don't even think that, I'm not even sure that he invoiced, actually.
Alright, so then I have a problem with advice given without being invoiced. And we rely on that information. I mean. This was, I am concerned about that going forward. That was out of the scope of the work. We didn't pay him for it. It's not on letterhead. It's a strange opinion, so. I am concerned about relying on that information going forward. It's not clear who wrote what. The information that's in SharePoint, so.
I, Ron?
Yes, go ahead.
I think that that was, we were kind of in a, between a, I think that we, there was time crunch and we were in this. Thing where we had to go to the selectmen, they had to act on something. And so that was the the rationale, whether it was, whether it was necessary or not, that was the rationale at that point, but I think. To, we don't need, we don't, we're not in that bind anymore. We can ask for town councils as long as we let Greg know, so we shouldn't need to do that again.
I still would like to see the invoice. Thank you.
If it exists. Okay. Next item, thank you all for getting these minutes. I have in our packet, I saw the minutes of the 16th, 17th, 18th and 23rd. And were there any other completed minutes that were in our packet?
You mentioned a March 28th. I didn't see them in our packet.
March 23rd.
They're not in the.
They're not. I thought they were. I went through that.
I don't think so.
I might have to look again. March 28th. Yeah, still is outstanding. Let me.
March 23rd, I'm thinking.
I'll make a motion to accept the units of May 16th. As written.
And we approve all of them at once?
Sure.
So are we sure that there's no? I don't want to approve the 23rd if they're not in there.
No, I make the motion to, I'll make a motion to approve May 16th, May 17th, May 18th and May 23rd.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Mary?
So I just wanted to note that there was only two sets of minutes come Sunday, so I think it was Saturday or Sunday, the May 17th and the 23rd. So I don't know about the other meeting minutes and I have some comments on the 17th, but I only got halfway through. It was 10 pages. But I have some comments on those.
Can you?
Get these approved, so can we go over them or?
Yeah, they're quick. I mean, again, I only got halfway through it, but I can give it, give them to you quickly.
Yep.
So on the first page, last sentence where it says.
Hold on, who's taking, who's taking notes?
I did 17th, 18th and 23rd.
So you'll take these notes, Sarah?
Yeah, I'm, I'm doing them online.
Go ahead, Mary, sorry.
I have to let my dog out of the room real quick. Sorry, it is dog night.
Sue, do you have the, the letterhead, blank letterhead template? And could you send it to me? I'm looking for it and I can't find it.
Okay, I'm happy to send it to you.
Thank you.
So just the first page, last. Two sentences, it says Sarah Creighton removing sections one through four and replacing with news.
No.
S six is spelled wrong.
Oh, there are probably lots of those. I was doing the midnight. But this is the public comment. This is the public hearings. This one is important. And thank you to Laura for. Some notes.
Should I go ahead?
Yep, go ahead.
Um, I think it's the second page, three quarters of the way down. It's. Something else you were saying, the language on the website in Town Court for two weeks and then the next sentence. To proposal does allow modification of structure of more than 100%. I guess. And then the fourth page. Wendy Dixon. Yeah. And then under that, Brian Miller. There's just the and has an extra D. Under Gary Gilbert, the second sentence says not except for odds sit like a dead end road.
Other situations.
That's all I got so far. Yeah, but.
I'll try, I will do a spell check as well. I guess, hold on. Okay.
I guess the other thing is I didn't have a chance to look at them. Maybe we just post them as draft and if there's changes, we can make, give them to you in the next, I mean, at least that they're up.
Okay.
Good, so we have a proposal to a, so. Good, so we have a proposal to, uh, a, so a motion to, uh, accept those minutes of the sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and twenty-third, and we've had a discussion, a roll call vote. It's Peyton?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Delicio?
I'm gonna abstain.
Ms. Foley?
Abstain.
Mr. Only?
Yeah.
Ms. Tanny?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so it's, um, four to two. Accept. Okay, um. Sue, question to Sue Brown, is there any news on hybrid meetings from the state, did you know, hear of anything?
I have not heard of anything, um, can I go back to the minutes for just one mon- minute?
Yes.
Um, I just want to, um, to make note that you've approved some tonight, we have a number of them that have been approved, we've collected them, we think they're, oh, that we think they're the correct ones, um, can we post those? I do, I have noted that they are all, they were approved in past meetings, I just can't guarantee that they had all the corrections that were supposed to be made because they were, I pulled them from SharePoint. Do, hence, should I post them, and should I post them as, um, as final?
Well, I, it's hard to answer. I mean.
I don't know who else to ask.
That's a, that's a hard call.
Or I can post them as past, and whoever wants to look over them to see if anything was changed, they would be welcome.
I think, um, I, I'm gonna suggest, I know this doesn't sound very fun, Sue, but I think you'll have to skim through them, and, and, because some of them were gibberish. A- and before we, you know, and if you can at least go through them and say, does this have complete sentences, if it doesn't, then we're gonna have to bring it back. I think, I mean, it, it's, I don't know, somebody's gonna, or maybe somebody has to look, read through them, and, and look at them.
Yeah, I think they're, I think they're be, I think they're beyond that, I think they're, I think they're pretty good. Um, given the circumstances, I don't think that they're nonsensical, um, I just don't know if all of people's comments, small comments, were captured um, in the final edit, so.
Why don't we post them as graphs, and then people can look at them, and we can make a final vote?
We could also revoke them if you, if you care, I've kept a, um, I've kept a, um, a matrix of when they were passed, um, I've tried to capture, I've listened to most of the minutes, the, re-listened to most of them, I, um, I think it's the board's decision whether to post them as draft or final. And what you want to do to correct any, anything that you find.
I, it's just hard to say with not knowing what's in them, but. Is any, is anybody gonna take the time to go through them on the board, otherwise they might as well just go up?
I think, um, both Mary and Laura have their hands up, Ron.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, Mary, go ahead, maybe you can give us better.
Mine doesn't have to do with the meeting minutes, I was asking, it looks like we skipped over a topic.
What did we skip?
The, uh, master plan formatting map. Or implementation table. It's right under the ZBA, um, letter.
It's not on the version I'm looking at, son of a gun, sorry. All right, let's, let's finish on the minutes, um.
I'm, I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt, did you take it off of the revised agenda?
No, I, I don't know, I'm looking at.
It's on the amended agenda. It came out late in the day.
That's the original master plan that was to be discussed, and then.
Formatting and maps and implementation.
That was.
I'm not looking at the amended agenda, I'm looking at an, an agenda that I started a while back, so I don't.
It's on the amended agenda that was published today, I guess.
It's also on the posted agenda from July eleventh.
Okay, so let's first, let's finish the minutes, Laura, did you have a question on it?
Yes, I just have a suggestion, let's not belabor these, if Sue says they are in complete senses, I trust her, I know that the comments that I personally made were like, on the ones that were flagrantly ungrammatically difficult to read, so, um, I propose we put draft on them and get them up so that people can read them, and if an error is caught, or someone objects to something, then we will come back and fix it, and if need be, vote on it again, but I don't think we should spend any more time on this, I think we should get them up so they can be seen and put draft on them.
They have to get finalized, so if we final, just, okay, we'll put final on them, then, and post them.
Can you, can you read the dates, Sue, of the which ones we're talking about, so we can just get that on the record? Or is it just any?
Just let me, um, I think I have it here, so.
I forgot about those maps.
So January thirty-first, February fourteenth, February twenty-eighth, March fourteenth. And then March twenty-eighth, which I have con, I have done over, and I have them, I will submit them, I don't know how, I thought I'd put them in there, but I don't see them. Um, April fourth. Um, and that takes care of everything, the only ones that we have, are waiting on is May second, which Christina volunteered to complete. And then we would be up to date.
Okay, so Laura, your motion is to approve those minutes that Sue just read out?
Yes, I do see that the three twenty-eight was a LCD hearing. So do we, is that the one that we don't have yet, Sue?
I have, I have completed that, I thought that I had put it up, and I thought that I had shared it, so that one is available.
Okay.
And I will put it in.
Because I, I did also take some notes on that one, if we didn't have anything to start with.
Yes, no, I have.
Are we including that, are we including that in the motion?
I noticed that I submitted it on seven-seven.
But it's not in the pa, it's not in the folder.
Right. That's what I understand.
So push three twenty-eight to the next meeting?
Yeah. I, I agree.
Especially that we give, got a lot of public comment there.
So.
So my motion, I guess, is everything but three twenty-eight.
The second.
As, as draft, you wanted to post it?
No, as final.
Final.
It's final.
Track that, yeah.
Is there a second on that motion? Okay, roll call, Ms., um, Creighton?
Yes.
Ms. Delicio? Christina?
Yes.
Ms. Foley?
Abstain, I'd like to see them first.
Mr. Only?
Yes.
Ms. Tanny?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Five, one, okay.
So I, Ron, I just want to confirm, I did send them to every board member on seven-seven, um, if anyone wants to find them, so I will put them in the next in the next, in SharePoint for the twenty-fifth as well. There's a three twenty-eight. And if you have anything corrections beforehand, please send them to me, and then I will reissue them with any corrections, so we don't have to take up time, so Laura, particularly if you took, um, some notes, I appreciate that.
On three twenty-eight specifically?
Yeah.
Yeah, I took them too, I gave them to Sharon, I gave notes to Sharon.
Okay.
Can we also, um, clarify on two twenty-eight, that was the public hearing that was, um, interrupted by, um, learning the fact that the board was, that the meeting was improperly posted, um, I think we need, I don't think those minutes have been posted for anything about that meeting, and so maybe just a, a summary me, summary, it's also not indicated that it was canceled on the website. So my suggestion, Sue, is that you create a set of minutes that says the planning board created a summary of the LCD, this was repeated at two twenty, at three twenty-eight. Comments were taken, but then it was discovered this meeting was improperly posted, so this meeting is moot, or null, or whatever language, and that just something like, a couple of lines to indicate we started to meet, but then we postponed to three twenty-eight. And then put that up, because the, if meeting kind of half happened, um, if you recall, so it, we need something on there for the two twenty-eight minutes, so.
My, my understanding is that what was improperly posted was the hearing, but not the meeting, is that correct?
No, it was that we, we abandoned the whole thing, so.
Well, that's funny, because you talked for two hours. The minutes are pretty extensive, I think that's not.
All right. Um, I think we talked, okay, but whatever happened, my point being, there's nothing on the website for two twenty.
Right, I have those minutes.
I'm sure we have not reviewed those, so.
They were approved on four eleven.
I don't believe that, I really don't.
I, I went back and lis, I went back and listened to the recordings of four eleven, that's so, that's why I've kept them.
Then if you, if you listen to it, then, then we're fine, but.
So my recommendation is, in what I'm doing for other committees that I administ, administer, um, as a matter of record, I'm just each time that they're approved, I write on the bottom of them when they were approved by the board, so once they're approved, say, approved by the planning board at such and such meeting, so going forward, we can just look at those meeting minutes and and confirm that, so I will double check those, but, um, um, my matrix says that they were approved on four eleven.
Okay, they were in the four eleven packet, so I stand corrected.
Okay, let's move on from the minutes, the, um. So I, I found it, um, discussion of master plan formatting, maps, and implementation table, uh, Sue Brown.
So, um, as Gary had mentioned earlier, um, after we completed the master plan, we were in the process, after it was approved, we were in the process of reformatting, um, formatting and finalizing the maps, and finalizing the implementation table, um, we were partially, through that, when COVID hit, and the staff hours to attend to that, um, went out the window. The maps were begun with, uh, AppGeo, um, because we were going back and forth of what went on with them, um, they were eating up too much of the budget, Mr. Russell um, and I worked on, he volunteered to complete those, but again, we, we had to stop meeting, um, with COVID, so all of that has been put on hold, and now we are ready to, um, I think, hopefully, um, kind of pick up the pieces, I have someone who is willing to help with the mapping, um. I think it will be iterative, so I would like to not, to, I, I don't want to do it with, um, AppGeo or someone that's, um, or Gary who isn't being, who isn't being paid, so I would like to hire a consultant, um, that is less expensive than AppGeo, um, and let it be an iterative process to finalize those maps. The implementation, um, matrix, which, um, is a part of, it simply takes all the recommendations of the master plan, puts them in a matrix that says, um, their priority level, who's primary responsible, and who are the other stakeholders to be involved, um, I think this is a great opportunity for the board to put, um, the master plan in context, and look at those, rearrange any priorities, and also note where things have been tried, and if they've failed, um, put a status report and say, you know, we're, we're shelving this, or we're not going forward for whatever reason, because the context has changed, so I would like to do all of those things, um, um, in the next six months. Um, I, I think the formatting, um, and the maps shouldn't be long-term, um, the implementation, because it, um, really requires the input of all the other boards and committees that might be responsible, might take a little longer, just in terms of getting everyone together and, and agreeing, but I think it's something that we could do without, um, without it being too long a process.
Okay, thanks, Sue, uh, Gary. Mary?
Sue, can you, um, so a few things, can you tell us what consultant you're thinking of and, and the cost?
I can tell you the.
Next question would be, could we get the matrix in Word format so that we could, um, put edits on there?
Yes, and yes, um, I, I have, um, a woman who I am meeting with, um, on Wednesday, I, she said she would be interested in helping out, I don't have, um, we haven't talked about the cost yet, but I've used, she's, um, the, um, Open Space and Recreation Committee used her, she's, um, worked with MECT, she's Cape Ann Trail Stewards, um, she's a cartographer, um, Amy Blondin, you may know her, um, so I hope to, um, come to an agreement on a fair price um, for that work, and I'm happy to share it when I do.
Yeah, I mean, is that a scenario where you get a few quotes, or is this, um, do we already have this budgeted for?
No, this is already budgeted for, this would come out of the professional services, which is where I've always intended to, um, to pay for the reformatting, the mapping. That's all, it's all done, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily, it's, it's below the, would be the, below the price limit that I would need to, to shop it around.
Actually, where would you put that matrix Word file, would you put it in our, uh, would you send it out to the board, or?
Happy to put it in SharePoint.
Okay.
Um, and just recall that, um, I think the last time it was worked on was maybe November of
Twenty twenty?
Twenty nineteen, maybe, or twenty twenty, yeah, it's, that hasn't been, um, it hasn't been updated since then, so.
Okay, thanks, um, Sarah.
Um. I want to make sure that we don't get our effort diluted. It is my opinion that we have some zoning changes that we need to get passed. We need to get our website updated, support those, we need, the master plan website is still quite out of date. Um, and so I want to get those housekeeping, I want to get these minutes, yay, we're almost done, done. And so, um, I appreciate Sue, you wanting to go back and do that, but I, I want to see us get our housekeeping of the stuff we're working on, that I believe we've kind of made a priority. So if, if this doesn't take from that, then that's fine, but if it does, then I have some concerns.
Understood. Mary?
Um, I would just agree with that, because I, I would agree with that, um, because I think once we start looking at the matrix, and the, the master plan data was put together in twenty sixteen, and a lot has changed since twenty sixteen, so our priorities probably will shift, um. You know, and I think as a board, you know, once we talk about what we're going to talk about with the select board, I mean, I think we would also be looking at perhaps adding, changing, or deleting, whichever it may be items with the master plan, I mean, I think that's the intent of the master plan, you review it once a year, once every couple of years, so maybe we could do that as a whole separate project, once the zoning is, um, dealt with. That's my suggestion.
Okay, understood. Um. All right, I think a couple of things, just before we close here, um, we did get the application for the curb cut, um, came in today, I posted it into your July twenty-fifth packet. Um, so it's one Windermere. So, um, take a look at it, um, and then I would like to, uh, see if the board would try to figure out a site visit date. Now, it looks like this meeting, uh, next week is off the table, um, meeting with the board, the select board on the eighteenth. So we do have two weeks, um, any suggestions on a date for a site visit? I could suggest next Monday at five-thirty?
Ron, I've had my hand up, I just.
Oh, sorry, Christina, sorry.
That's okay, I'll, I'll figure out how to get it dark, I have to make a note for myself, I quickly looked at it, and in my opinion, the application is incomplete, so, um, a lot of missing information, assessor's map, um, it's in the overlay district, so I really do have a problem without us getting this information, reviewing it, setting a site visit before, I think you're putting the cart before the horse, in my opinion on this, um, my hand was originally raised because. My hand was originally raised because, could you give us an update, what's going on with admin? Because we always go back and forth. Who accepts applications? Who we should we talk to? It seemed to be Sharon and now it's Sue. Like, what's going on? Why can't we keep things consistent? Are we having staffing problems? Do we send a message to Greg? Like, this is, we need consistency.
So the application comes into the town clerk and then it's sent to Sue. Uh, and I get a copy of it. And so I believe that's the procedure. I think it's going.
That's not the procedure. Sue. Hasn't been the procedure for a long time, but.
It goes, it goes to, so now it's going with Gail. I think the, the conversation about what is happening with admin is, is longer and it's not probably one that I should provide as it's, I think it's a bit complicated with health reasons and surgeries, et cetera. So I think we're, we've kind of put in place some procedures that will get us through. It's anticipated, I believe it's anticipated that we will be following a procedure similar to what followed when Helene was in, in that it will come to the town clerk and then she passes it on to the town, to the board administrator, copying me, copying Ron, and that's how it's received. And Helene had always just checked to see if they were complete. That was administrator's role.
And Sue, you said there is, on this application, there's an additional map that hasn't been posted yet. Is that what I heard today?
Um, no, so it has been posted. So there were two things that I noted when it came in. The, didn't have the assessors, the butters list attached to it. So you'll find that in SharePoint as a separate document. Then I looked at it and I told him that I thought it was confusing and that the board would be confused about what was, what he was proposing to do. So he sent another plan that tried to indicate what his proposal was to make it more clear. I'm not sure if it's more clear. I can certainly walk the board through it. They could certainly be walked through it at a site visit. So I, and I did tell him that the board would likely ask for a new and clean plan at some point, so.
So I'm just trying to move things along. I'm trying to schedule a site visit. If we want to wait, we can wait. It's up to the board. Laura?
I was going to suggest a site visit on the night of the hearing, which is the twenty third, the twenty fifth. Given that we're not having, are we not having the meeting with the select board on the eighteenth? In which case it would be off the night, definitely.
Hello, I, one person at a time, so I.
So I was, I was suggesting on the evening of the twenty fifth, if that's when the.
Well, we will have, so we'll have a board meeting that night. Our, we will meet on that night. You're suggesting prior.
Five thirty, like we were going to do before.
Okay. Mary?
Um, so I'm not clear why we're changing procedures, how we do curb cuts. You know, right or wrong, we've always had them, the applicant come with a completed application, walk through the process and then we have a site visit. I'm, I'm unclear why this particular one would change. I also looked at it. I actually got a a plan from the building inspector and the building inspector plan was different than what was in our folder. The driveway was in a different spot. There was different information on things. So I'm really not clear what's going on. The application in the, in SharePoint, parts of it were handwritten on the map. There was no stamp. Like Christine said, it's an overlay district. So I think there's a lot of questions, so I, I would like to stick with our, our regular course of business and have the applicant come and present, and so we can ask some questions and then, then have a site visit. That's my recommendation.
Sarah?
I think given that we're trying to have one meeting in August, we would be well served to have a site visit before our next meeting. We can certainly ask the applicant, make sure that it, it is a complete application. But if, if we're trying to, you know, build our image as a, as cooperative and, and responsive, then why not meet first or, or meet between now and the next meeting? Certainly, we could give some feedback that the plan needs to be more accurately, you know, have a stamp and be a, I agree that it's a little unclear. But in this case, they're moving it off a busy street to a small street. It seems like the kind of thing we should encourage and you know, it's hard for us to be responsive in August, I think. So in, in fairness to the applicant, though, and I would like to have seen, I would like to see us expedite our curb cut review anyway, in this way, to get an application, do a site walk, so we know what we're talking about and then act on it. I don't think it's a matter of, I don't think we have rules that say we have to first get it and then talk to them and then.
I've been on the board twelve years. I've done site visits, many different procedures, different people. I mean, it's, it's not as hard and fast rule. It cuts down from three meetings to two meetings on this subject, in my opinion. We, we, we see the site, then we get the applicant in here and we question him or ask questions and get further. And then if everything's fine, we vote. So it takes it from a three week process to two meetings. So that's my opinion.
I know my hands are hidden, so I'm just going to say that my hand is up. I completely agree, as long as the application is complete. And from what I see here, it is not. And I think that it goes both ways. You're kind of wasting our times if we're looking through this and trying to check boxes and, you know, putting, you know, scheduling a site visit without all the information, so. That's my concern.
Let's schedule a, a site visit contingent on us receiving the plan ahead of it, the completed application. How's that?
Sounds good to me.
Ron, I would need to, I need someone to say what, what they think a completed plan is. It's a driveway. It's not always required that there's, you know.
Well, it's, the, the member said it was confusing, so it must be something, I haven't looked at it.
Okay.
There's no topo?
There isn't topo on this. Nope.
So we would like to know where the drainage is. I mean, there should be some, you know, is that going to, where's it sloping to? Any easements, any trees, you know, that are in that way there?
Also what they.
You know.
Is there a sidewalk?
Yeah, things like, you know, the, we'd safety and drainage things, like.
There's a checklist, there's an application and a checklist. It's just not complete.
Yeah, so I think we've asked for all that stuff, the impervious, the lock coverage percentages, like you said, on the trees, the sidewalks, the slope. There's a checklist, so that's, that's, has been the process.
Oh. Oh.
So you want me to talk to the applicant tomorrow or? When I have a.
Oh, I can. I can do it. I'll, I'm happy to copy you.
There appear to be two documents that are the same. And no application, actually. So maybe it's just not in here yet.
No, the application, I think, is there.
It is.
No, it's, okay, so there's the butters list and this one, I don't know, can you see my screen? The other two files are the same.
So Sarah, keep scrolling on that map. It's with the map.
Oh, here it is.
Yeah, it's there. I'd be happy to have a joint call, Sue, with you and the applicant to straighten out, so we can get this thing done. And let's tentatively schedule a site visit in, if the application is complete, otherwise I'll cancel it. So at least we get it out on schedules. And I like Laura's idea of five thirty on the twenty fifth. That sound good?
Yeah.
Um, I have trouble making it before six thirty, so I could see it on my own.
You have another, suggest another.
I said just we do it on the five thirty on the twenty fifth.
Okay, I mean, the last few site visits, or the last two or three years, not too, not too big attendance. Well, let's, so we'll tentatively schedule it for the twenty five thirty.
Okay, I'll confirm.
Um, so just, Sue, did you get the Board of Health regulations that was promised to you from the Water Resource Committee?
I believe I got a link to them, yeah.
I'm wondering if the board has any interest in looking at the proposed Board of Health regulations. There is some, there may be some duplication with our zoning and what they're proposing. I'm thinking maybe we should make the link available to the board.
I think that's a good idea. I think it's very much a repetitive.
Yeah, I don't know if. Go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question about that, is that whether they're duplicative or not, does the Board of Health have what almost appear to be zoning like power? They do? I mean, can they do that, what the, can, I mean, is, is, has, has town council reviewed it? It seems to me it's a zoning change that they were, that the draft that I saw.
I think that's, I think your point is good, Sarah, and I think it should go to town council.
Yeah, I think they should send it to town council before we spend too much time on it. I think it's great input for zoning changes. And I think our changes to section six and section twelve help support exactly this and, but but I think I would suggest that the, that the Water Resources Board determine whether that, that's a legal way to regulate zoning, land use. And I, I know about it because I'm the alternate to that committee, so I saw the draft.
Yeah, I think, Becky, I think you guys backed down on, you backed down on Water Resource on that, didn't you at your meeting?
Um, Mary had her hand up.
I'm sorry, Mary.
Oh, thanks, Becky. I just, maybe you can give it, Becky, if, I'm just looking for context. I don't know what people are talking about.
Um, the Water Resource Task Force, yes, we, we did feel that they moved little prematurely that the information the select board requested should have been brought to the board prior to its going anywhere else. So I would say that is premature at this point.
Can I just, as I said, I think that the Board of Health has proposed regulations for for land use in the water, in the watershed. It is what I, is is sort of, at least how I read it, proposed regulations from the Board of Health.
So does that go to town meeting or that we just wrap it into a bylaw change?
I mean, I think the thought is that the Board of Health can just regulate it by a vote of their own. And so that's the question, the first question, not to say that it's bad. I think that it's well intentioned. I think it's so.
So I was one, I, I was wondering if there's any duplicity in our current zoning and that there's, you know, one things are changing the others. I don't know if that was properly vetted with our current zoning or proposed zones.
So. Ron, if I may.
Mary.
I, I, I think that's also part of why we wanted to slow it down to be able to assess the information and recommendations that were asked. And Mary, did I answer your question? If I may, Ron, I don't want to go back and forth without you.
Go ahead, Mary.
Yes, I think between Becky and Sarah, I got the gist of what the, what the issue is. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ron.
I still think the link would be helpful, just so you can get the gist of these, of this stuff for the, for the board, Sue.
I can just save it to the next meetings folder. I got it open right now. It's a draft. I don't know if I have the latest, but.
Really detailed.
Yeah, but it talks about a proposed drainage system, no runoff from units of more than ten units. Where there's runoff, there needs to be a plan, detention ponds need to be utilized. Soil permeability has certain, I mean, it's, it's quite detailed. BMPs for infiltration and detention structures. It's sort of seems to me that it's the Board of Health issuing permits for stormwater, which maybe that's a great way to go. I'm, I'm not against it. I just, I'm, I don't want to spend a lot of time on it. If it's, if it's, if we should be talking about zoning changes that incorporate these things as opposed to a Board of Health regulation. So I'd like to know that first. I'll put it in the folder for next time.
Nice. All right, just on, on a last thing, that's a little bit for me, a little. So I had, last time a board member said they didn't want to have a retreat till after a special town meeting. And then I thought tonight, we thought about having a retreat soon. You know, August is generally light for us. I don't know if you guys want to schedule something in the summer or should we wait? So I guess, think about it and let's talk about it next meeting, about when we'd like to have it. I know, if there's anything else, anyone have anything else? Otherwise, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move that we adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Right.
Yes.
Mr. Lucio? Still here?
Yes.
Kristi, Ms. Foley?
Yes.
Stromy? Ms. Teddy?
Yes.
Thank you all. Chair votes.
Thanks, bye.
Thank you. Good night.